So let's go ahead and kick this off. Scott?
All right, John. Thank you very much. Thanks, everybody, for hanging with us through an extraordinarily long, it seems, election season. My name is Scott Anderson. For those who don't know me, I'll give you a quick background. I've been in small business for about 30 years, mostly in the radio business at our local KMTN radio stations. However, we did sell that company. I'm not responsible for anything that's on the air now. And I have also served three terms as a town council member on your Jackson Town Council. I moved here in 1990. I was one of the founding members of the Board of the Housing Trust. I've also served on the Historical Society, which is quite interesting, I must say. Most recently, your past chairman of the Jacksonville Chamber of Commerce. I sit on the Board of Directors of the United States Chamber of Commerce. I am your only independent candidate running this year. No partisanship on my part. I'd appreciate your vote on November 4th, and I just want to say to my fellow candidates, it'll be sad not to see you so often anymore.
Thanks, Scott. My name is Paul Perry. I'm a lifetime resident of Wyoming, grew up on a ranch, so I've got a lot of experience from nature. My wife and I have two boys at home. I really want to see them be able to succeed and raise their families in Jackson if they choose to. I own a successful small business here in Teton County with my sister. We've been at it more than 20 years. We understand what it's like to try to run a business in Teton County. We suffer the housing issues, the labor issues, transportation issues. So I'm there every day and I see it. So I've got a really good perspective, great ideas for solutions to all that. I'm out there from Hopeback, Kelly, Moran, the parks, everywhere. I'm out there seeing what's going on. I have smart, sensible ideas, and I bring successful business experience to county government. So, thank you.
Well, good evening, and thank you, everybody, for coming out. My name is Paul Vogelheim. I've been your county commissioner for the last six years. Last week, I was walking down the hall of the commission, outside the commission chambers, and one of our employees came up to me and just said, "Thanks for your common sense approach to problem solving, and just that you always have an ability to kind of fix things." And I said, "Thanks." And that's what I still want to continue to do for another four years. When I got into this gig, it was back in 2008. I was driving down the road with my dad, a little bit north of San Francisco. I got a call from the Republican Party, letting me know that Bill Paddleford had passed away. And they asked me to consider putting my name in. I looked at my dad and I said, "Dad, what do you think?" He goes, "This life is just about service." And he said, "You should go for it." And so I have the attitude of service. I also have 25 years of senior management experience to offer to the county.
My name is Smokey Ray. For those of you who don't know, it's really Kathleen Ray. I know you're all been dying to know what the real name is. I was born and raised on a farm in Preston, Idaho, and that's where I learned my work ethic. It's where I learned my love for the land. I felt really bad when my father put it in soil bank, just as I was getting ready to learn how to drive the Columbine. So I do know, from the hard work, I have, the last 30 years, been very proud of the work I've done in this community, working for, as an advocate for, the general people of this community. I've noticed that people keep saying they don't have the business background, and I find that very funny, especially because I have a successful small business before I came to Jackson and found my love for working for people. And I decided to Google it, and I found out, I said, "What's the difference between nonprofit and for-profit?" And what came back was, "For-profit is raising money, is purely financial, for the individual. Nonprofit is, is it the best for the community or the greater good?" So, thank you.
Hi, everybody. My name is Ben Ellis. I'm a Democrat running for the county commission, and it's been my pleasure to serve this community, first as a planning commissioner, and more recently as a county commissioner, for about 12 years. But public service is not all that I do. I have a wonderful wife, who's an elementary school teacher here, and a son. He's 10. He's into hockey. He's into Minecraft, like many of your kids probably are. And I also run a small business. It's developing renewable energy projects around the West. I've served for a couple of terms now, and I want to do one more term, primarily to complete some of the projects that I've started and introduced to the Board. Many of them are well underway, including our land use planning, and those will have a life of their own and a trajectory of their own. But we're not done with dealing with affordable housing, employee housing, workforce housing, and transportation. These are real issues our community face, and I have a lot of good ideas to bring forward and help move those ideas to the next stage of development for our community. Thanks.
Good evening. My name is Reynolds Palmeroy. I am honored to be running with this distinguished panel of candidates for county commissioner. Once again, you voters have a challenging, important task at hand, and that is to select the bulk of the county commissioner's leadership for the next four years. I believe your vote for county commissioner is the most important vote in local elections, as the community's policy and vision are ultimately vetted and expressed at this leadership level. All of us bring a unique perspective and a package of talents and skills. Some have been in office for multiple terms, some have held other elective office, and some are on their second or third try for this office. But tenure brings a double-edged sword of both tunnel vision and group think, which is why elections provide both the promise and the opportunity to get fresh perspectives and new energy, and this is why I ask for your vote. I'm ethically grounded, and my instincts and perspective are informed by 35 years in Teton County. I have a proven record as a business owner and operator, the strongest conservation record of any candidate, six years on the planning commission, and the resolve to make hard choices to do the hard work to get a job done. I ask for your vote on November 4th. Thank you.
Well, thank you, everyone, for coming out tonight, and I really want to thank the League of Women Voters for hosting this forum, but also, almost more importantly, for your continued commitment to making democracy work for all. My name is Mark Newcomb, and I just want to remind everyone that the primary function of the county commission is to protect all of our, everyone's, health, safety, and welfare. The job requires a broad set of skills, experiences, and background. I'm a lifelong resident here. I am married. We have two small children. And I have been a small business owner. I was a part-owner of Exum Mountain Guides and a personnel manager for Exum Mountain Guides. But I'm also trained as an economist, as a geologist, and I'm currently serving my third term as your county commissioner. Taken altogether, as your planning commissioner, I'm sorry. Taken together, it's the right mix of skills and especially values to serve you as your county commissioner.
Okay, the first question will come to Paul Perry, I think, from Jonathan?
Yes. Thank you very much, and Karen, John, Sandy, thank you so much for hosting this. And thanks to all of you for going through everything you've been going through for the last several months. I'd like to start by asking you, as a preamble, a series of quick yes/no questions, and if your answer to these questions is yes, would you just raise your hand? Do you feel there's an affordable workforce, affordable indoor workforce housing problem, and that it's important to address it? If yes, raise your hand, please. Do you feel it's important to protect Teton County's environment? Are you concerned about transportation issues in general and traffic in particular? Do you feel the county's finances should be handled prudently and responsibly? Are you in favor of the lodging tax? Do you have significant public service experience? Do you have significant management experience? And finally, in this one, there may be a little bit of disagreement. Are you concerned about the county commission becoming more partisan? Yes or no? Okay. Seven candidates, eight questions, 56 identical responses, unless I missed somebody in there. And the reason I ask you these questions is to illustrate a point. From the voter's perspective, it's hard to distinguish among you, hence this forum, to try and identify meaningful differences between you. So how do we identify those meaningful differences? For those of us on the panel, I hope we can ask you questions which lend themselves to drawing true distinctions between you. And for the candidates, I hope you will avoid platitudes, answer questions directly, and generally respond in ways which give voters insight into how you truly differ from your opponents. So with that, my first question is, each of you has management experience of some kind, and many of you are touting that experience as a reason you should be elected. Yet, in an ironic twist, you're not running to be the manager of Teton County, you're running to serve on the Board of County Commissioners. Put another way, you're not running to manage the county, but to govern it. To that end, two questions. First, how do you see the difference between management and governance? And second, there's a perception that the county commission micromanages the county, and in that perspective, from that perspective, how do you, as one member of a five-member board, ensure that the commission focuses on governance and not on micromanagement?
All right. Well, that's a heck of an opening question. So the difference between management and governance, I believe you have to have good management skills to be a good governance in that aspect. And that's where I believe that when you have a small business, you've gone through all the trials and tribulations and continue to, that it gives you a good perspective of what else is going on in the county and how those issues need to be addressed. As far as micromanaging, I would agree. I think that a good portion of our county is micromanaged. My philosophy, you put good people in charge and let them do their job. They might do it differently than I would, but you have to give them the opportunity, and oftentimes, they're going to come out with better results than I may on my own.
Jonathan, I think, when I look at governance, I look at also operating as a board, and it's not that we're, in management, a lot of times, in the, more of a traditional hierarchy, you have a CEO, you have kind of a structure where you own your kingdom, in a way. It's very different in government. You're operating on a board, and to distinguish, you know, those skills are how well you play with others, how open are you, how transparent are you? And I've had a number of years' experience working on boards, and recently, I've been asked to join the Community Foundation Board, a huge compliment. But it's acting with some of the brightest and strongest board members in this community, and I'm having an opportunity to engage with them and work. On the micromanagement side, we do have good people in the county. We have excellent managers. Is there a tendency, when things aren't getting done, that we have to jump in and hold some people accountable? Yes.
Well, I think it comes down to, when you're managing a business, for instance, I go back to your number-one priority is financial gain. When you're working with government, your number-one responsibility is, what's the best for the community? What's the community good that's going to come from this? I think that a person who has the experience that I've had of working with really diversified people, I've been on state, national, local, boards, committees, and what I see is, everybody has so many different opinions, and there's so many good ideas that are out there. A good politician or a good governance person is going to hear every voice and is going to put value in every voice. They're going to respect every voice. That comes back also to how I think, is it micromanaged? I feel like some of the employees think it might be micromanaged. I also believe really strongly that we look for the best employees, and when we hire them, we've got to get out of their way. We're just oversight.
Governance is about setting policy, and a good Board of County Commissioners sets policy based on good interaction with the community and understanding what the community issues are. And then, that Board steps back and lets the staff manage and implement those policies. It should be a very clear line. Now, because of state statute, there are elements of governance in a county board that require a little bit more oversight. We have to approve all the contracts and vouchers. That's a little bit in the weeds. But what, as a Board, we should not be doing is getting in the way of staff implementing their work. And the Board, in the last few years, has been micromanaging. It's been something that's been making me very uncomfortable. Individual Board members have been communicating with different staff members in a way that undermines the ability of staff to understand what the policy is versus what an individual Board member's goals are. So I am very hopeful that the future Boards will change that in a really fundamental way. Thank you.
Thank you. One of the advantages of being towards the end of the line, as you get to hear some great ideas and thoughts, and a few things that I heard from this group is, really convinces me that there's a huge parallel between management and governance. What I heard is open-mindedness, collaborativeness, civility, common ground, transparency, efficiency, responsiveness, policy. And depending on what level of management you are, the parallels are straightforward and many. And you look at this group and the broad experience they have, the management skills that we have, and that I have particularly, will translate beautifully into governance. The beauty of this position is that we have an opportunity to interface with all of the elected, or all of the electorate, I should say, and work with some great other people. I'm looking forward to that, and I think that, as a manager, my governance skills will be excellent. Thank you.
Thank you, Jonathan. Yeah, that is a good question. In my view, governance requires some vision and a dash of compassion. You do need to be able to stand in the shoes of everyone in the community to understand what the broader general welfare is. There is some management involved. A lot of management is identifying good people, good staff, making sure they're compensated well, and also empowering them so that they derive from their job what it is that brought them to that job and what it is they love to do the most. And it is also important that we govern as a Board, and that's something I've learned on the planning commission. If we make a decision, and it wasn't my decision, it was a decision we still made as a planning commission, and that's how we present it to staff, and that's how we present it to the community, and that's truly how we need to operate as a county commission.
So having management experience gives you an opportunity to understand your actions and the effect that they have on your staff and on the community. That's where I think good, strong management experience is necessary for this job. And I'll cite a couple of examples of why I think we could stand for some better management on the county commission. I'll use, for one, my often quoted disdain for the raise for the county commissioners. I've never worked in a company where I've thought it was a good idea, as a leader of that company, to give myself a pay raise of 30-plus percent while I give my staff maybe 3%. And I don't think anyone did that on purpose to hurt anyone, but that is what good management teaches you, is that that is not how you recognize the worth of your employees. Micromanagement has got to stop. It happens on a daily basis. Every commissioner needs to understand they have no authority or no power as an individual, but only when they sit in a legal meeting as the Board of County Commissioners.
Okay, the next question is going to start with Paul Vogelheim. Before that comes, though, I've been asked to ask you, as an audience, to try and move towards the center so that people that are standing in the back have a chance to move in and sit on some of the seats on the ends of the rows, please, if you'd be so kind. Okay, next question is for Paul Vogelheim.
Paul?
Michael.
Paul. Tell me, is there any problem that the free market cannot solve, and if so, what is that?
Let's see if we can ground that in a specific, and let's take a look at the housing shortage that we have in this community, and we do have a housing shortage. We need to attack that with a two-pronged approach. Free enterprise and the private side can be a huge contributor to the solution in terms of adding additional rental units and to look at additional apartments. But government still plays a role, notably in this county, with the high cost of land for us to have a very functional and means of delivering deed-restricted houses, for instance, that have been very successful with the Housing Authority. I think we can improve on that with the greater coordination with the Housing Authority, the Housing Trust, and a greater coordination with town and county, working together on delivery of those type of products. So free enterprise can be part of this, lead in that solution, but we'll still need to have a government role in terms of providing some housing, affordable housing, workforce housing.
I'm not opposed to the free market, but I do think that we have to look at the situation we're in right now and realize that we got here because we are in an island. We only have 3% of our land that can be forced, that can be, that is for sale. Every time it turns over, it's going to be more money. Now, we've got some that's gone into conservation, so it's actually 2% of our county that's up. Every time it turns over, it's going to be more money. The free market is going to tell you, every time it turns over, it's going to be more money. I think that it's going to take a combination of the free market and the government to work together, but my fear is that if we don't own the land ourselves and have a deed-restricted, we are not going to have workforce housing. We're fooling ourselves if we think that we are going to have workforce housing that is there by the free market. There's too much money to be made. I think the time has come to bite the bullet, say what we've said since 1992, when we had our first comprehensive plan. Workforce housing is our number-one priority. We have not made it our number-one priority.
It's, you know, in some ways, Michael, it's a yes-or-no question. The answer, of course, is no. Government has an important role to play in our society. The reason, one of the primary roles, I think, of government is to create a level playing field for our economy to thrive, to understand what the rules are for developing land, to understand what the business conditions are, and be stable over a long period of time. I think that's a critical role for government. Another critical role for government is to fill in when the private markets can't provide goods or services or protect the resources that are so important to our community. Affordable housing is one. Transportation solutions is another. Protection of our wildlife resources, a third. Recognizing the impacts of rapid growth and development on our neighborhoods and our community character is a fourth. Understanding what kind of built-out environment we want is a fifth. The private sector can't do any of that. The motivations aren't there to provide those resources in any rational, real way. So government has a critical role. It has for many years, and it's a critical piece of protecting what's so important to us in this community.
I think we're all fortunate to be living in this community for a number of reasons. Clearly, we have a vibrant and robust intersection between the private sector and government here, and the dialogue that occurs daily, constantly, at the government level and at the bar after work, whatnot, is debating and focusing on that dynamic tension. What we've seen in this community is the pendulum swings back and forth. The government gets ahead sometimes of itself, the private sector falls behind, but sometimes that role is reversed. And so the beauty, again, of this small community is that we're each being a stakeholder. We're empowered to be involved and contribute our voice, and I think it's important that this group here convey that message to the folks who aren't here, and it's important for us as leaders to convey the openness and responsiveness that we'll bring to the table when you come up with issues and concerns, whether it's about housing or transportation or whatnot. We all come from the same perspective, which is that we love this place, we want to steward it, and we want to make it better, and that intersection is rich, robust, and is what makes me proud to be part of this community.
Markets are important, and it is very important to maintain a fair and rational business environment for markets. The price signal that a market conveys is one of the most powerful forms of information we have, and yet, when we have a market where folks from around the world can buy a piece of real estate in Teton County, making it very difficult, if not impossible, for our policemen, our teachers, our core infrastructure workers, let alone the folks who are doing the other jobs, the laborers and the dishwashers, to buy a home and live here, that is a market failure, and it does need to be addressed through some sort of government action. So we do have other examples. They've been enumerated by other candidates. I won't repeat them here so we can move on. But markets are important, yet they have a limit. They have a point at which the government has to play a role to address the imbalances and the failures.
I think the market on housing is broken. That's why we've interceded in the past. It's why during the housing boom, we put in mitigation rates that were, that now seem prohibitive. If we want any sort of market contribution to the housing issue, we've got to get rid of mitigation rates, at least temporarily, and relax some of the restrictions that allow for redevelopment. Otherwise, the market isn't going to play in this game. The government has had an important role. When I was with the town, we bought numerous houses for our own employees. We bought so many, as a matter of fact, we even housed a lot of the county employees. And we have focused on this, and so it's not a new idea to have the government fill in where the free market has failed.
And I concur that, I think we all agree that the government does have a role in this. You know, health, safety, there's a place for free market in our, in our community, and I'm an example of that. You know, we look at regulating a lot of small businesses. Well, if we over-regulate them, then we're going to get people from outside our community coming in here, and then my tax, my tax dollars that I'm collecting sales tax on are going to go out of state. So there is a balance. We all realize that. Our transportation, we're going to have to do something about that. It's affecting small business like mine. So I know there's a, there's a role for it, and just like housing, we, private businesses have to step up to the plate, too. They have to invest in housing for their employees.
If there's no follow-up, then the next question is for Smokey.
No. Okay. I'd like to, my opening question has to do with wildlife and housing, and, I mean, all of you are interested and supportive of increasing affordable housing and protecting and maintaining wildlife and wildlife habitat. Because both require more land, there seems, there can perhaps be a contradiction between the two. How do you reconcile having more housing and more habitat? Well, the way our LDRs are, we have the complete neighborhoods, is I'm looking at town as heart. So to me, that means we're going to have to go up. It's not something that we all want to do. It's like having to bite the bullet. There's so much land. We're not, the Tetons aren't going to go away. There's no more land that's going to come up. When I say that we have to own the land, I think that means that we have to have a deed-restricted. That doesn't mean that, and I'm looking more at rentals. I think that the way the LDRs and what we have written in our comprehensive plan is, we've put our environment as a priority. We've put our wildlife and our open space as a priority. In order to do that, though, we're going to have to take some hard, a really hard look and make some choices that haven't been really popular in the past. But multiple housing, or housing units, and that are deed-restricted and affordable, to me, is the only way we're going to be able to go. We need to look at rentals versus homeownership.
I think our affordable housing problem in this community is very solvable, and I think there are a lot of ways that we can do that without having any adverse or negative impacts on wildlife resources. It's true, the comprehensive plan anticipates a significant shift of development potential from the rural lands into the more urban areas, and I completely support that goal. And I agree with Smokey that affordable housing will require more density in town at a higher level than it currently does now. That's going to be a challenge for us from a community character perspective, but they're very compatible. The way that we can do this is with a real investment in, and a dedicated revenue stream. The mayor of Aspen was here just last week and saying that they've reached a 30% restricted housing pool, employee and otherwise, within their community. That's a huge goal. We can do that, and we need to put the question to the voters. Are we willing to consider a tax on, on ourselves to actually fund affordable housing? And if, if the voters say yes to that, we can solve this problem.
Again, I would address the habitat versus housing question by recognizing that we're always going to have this dynamic tension between the two. This community has committed itself for decades to preserving the first one, which is habitat and wildlife and open space, and it's really only been recently that we're seeing the pressures anew for, for housing. And the comments thus far, I share most of the perspectives. We've been talking about this for decades. We have obvious tools and mechanisms right in front of us that we can choose. that we can choose. I also echo the comments that we need to hear from the public, and they have to get engaged and committed and recognize that this is going to be tough work, but as a community, we can make the choices, sort of suck it up a little bit, quite frankly, and put the density, focus on traffic issues to preserve wildlife, and make the hard decisions that we've been talking about now for 20 years.
Really good questions tonight. You, as a community, spent five years hammering out a tenuous compromise that is called the 2012 Comprehensive Plan. You came before us, planning commissioners. Some of you stood up and said, "We need more housing." Others of you came in front of the planning commission and said, "We need to protect more habitat." In the end, the decision came down, and what the commission put its stamp on was, by and large, doing our best to protect habitat in the unincorporated county and asking for town as heart to support the bulk of the housing. It's a tenuous compromise. We actually don't have a whole lot of space for housing in town. As a county commissioner, we won't have a lot of sayin', lots on the town's shoulders. There's a few transitional zones in town where the bulk and scale can be increased to provide for housing. A lot of town is stable, where the bulk and scale won't be increased. If we don't control our growth in the county, we won't be helping town do their part. We have to control our growth out in the unincorporated county and protect that habitat.
I don't think the workforce housing issue necessarily has to have a negative impact on habitat. I think the greater focus on development and habitat disturbance comes in the several thousand platted unbuilt lots in the county, many of them in areas of scenic and natural resources, many of them up and against wilderness. And those, that's really what's driving the fear. We're not going to build a, an apartment complex out in John Dodge. We're not going to build one at Granite Ridge. We're not going to build one in the middle of the Walton Ranch. But what we do need to look out for is what keeps driving us to this idea that we need more housing. And the real truth is, we need to take a look in the future about how much commercial development we allow to continue in this valley, because with every new hotel or every new business that goes into effect, it further exacerbates and keeps the, the sort of vicious cycle of this need for more and more and more housing. And that, I think, is really the underlying question we need to address.
You know, habitat, housing, a lot of it's going to come down to education. All those people out there, as they go to develop their lots, build their homes, how do we educate them on protecting critical habitat on their properties? I was talking to people when I came in tonight. I live out on the West Bank. I don't remember this many moose in I don't know how many years. They're everywhere. And I know just two years ago, we were all looking, oh, the moose population is devastated. It's thriving, it's back. So, I believe that there is a balance, and we just have to educate those people and try to show them the proper way to protect the habitat on their properties when they build.
There is going to be a tension between protecting the wildlife and, and housing, but we've set as a priority wildlife, and we've set that as a, as a community. So, as we look at, at the comp plan that kind of lays out our vision, how we're going to do this, we've, we've talked about the rural areas that we're going to actually be downzoning the rural areas and upzoning the, the complete neighborhoods. Complete neighborhoods, primarily town, but also the village, other receiving areas. So, we have this, this vision, and what's key here is that we jump into the LDRs. It's been, it's been somewhat dormant. We've been kind of, we've had to take a couple of years to get our, our administrative side kind of done and the formatting, which we're just rolling out. It's going to take place at the end of this, end of this year. But we are going to be protecting, to a greater extent, wildlife, and we're going to be providing more housing with the LDRs being rolled out. We're going to open up additional places where apartments can be built, for instance, that we've designated for the housing needs in either District Four or District Two, excuse me, District Three or District Four. So, we just need to get after the LDRs and deliver on what the vision that we've laid out in our comprehensive plan.
If there's no follow-up, the next question goes to Ben.
That I would ask. Okay.
I could ask it, Jonathan, if you want.
I appreciate the offer, Ben. Since 1990, the population of both the town and the county have doubled, four times faster rate than the population growth of the state, the nation, or the world. And there's a perception that population growth in Teton County is causing problems such as traffic congestion, environmental degradation, and affordable workforce housing crunch. So, the question is, how much is enough? Do we need to limit our growth, and if so, at what, at what level?
Right. We spent a lot of time in the comprehensive plan exploring whether or not it's appropriate to put significant limitations on what people can do with their private property. There are various, you can issue less building permits in any given year to slow down growth, and we made a pretty clear commitment that that would be one of the last things that we would look at. It is on the table for discussion if we do not meet these goals of shifting the development potential from the rural lands into the more urban areas. And that'll take five or six years for us to study and see. But I support the potential of, of growth limitations if, if we are unable to make that shift over time. It's a very difficult thing, and the communities in the West that have actually had to implement that have gone through a lot of, of emotional drama to get to a point where they felt like it was an appropriate balance between restrictions on private development, restrictions on commercial development, and the, and the goals of the economy. So, I support the potential. I think we're on the right path for tracking that question, and Jonathan, you're absolutely right. It is a residential growth. It is not visitor growth that is driving the very impacts to the most important values in this community.
You know, the population growth is happening all throughout the Greater Yellowstone ecosystem, and we're seeing pressures from that here locally and, and also regionally. 20 years ago, when I was on the planning commission, the combined planning commissions and the electives at that time had some long, painful discussions about limiting growth and whether we're going to put a cap on it and if we would establish limits to growth. In the intervening 20 years, I think we found that thinking about a cap was premature back then. But since the growth that you've just cited and with the growth in the surrounding areas, we, we as a community and as a region really need to have this conversation. I would support limits and growth rate at some point, but I'd have to hear the conversation, understand from the community here that that's something that everybody realizes we're going to have to do.
Yeah, thanks for the question, Jonathan. The comprehensive plan does make it very clear that we do want to limit, if you will, our growth. That sounds a little bit harsh because we do have to be working very collaboratively with private property holders. In 78, the growth, before 78, the first comprehensive plan, the growth trajectory was like this. After 78, it was like that. Then it went up to 94. At 94, it angled down a little bit again. We're at another inflection point in that trajectory, and we really have to, this time, continue to bend that trajectory down a little bit. We need the cooperation of the private landholders. It's the vision of the community. There are ways we can work within that vision to, to bend that trajectory down. And again, we owe it to the town that'll be accepting the bulk of the affordable housing in the future and to hold our growth down in the county. So, there are ways of doing it. We need to look at the base right under Wyoming statute of one house per 35 acres. We need to find out what private property, what the bundle of rights that private property has, owners have, would allow them to do, and see if we can craft land development regulations that will get the job done. It's imperative for the future of our county.
I take a more direct approach to this issue. We have these conservation needs. We want to conserve open space. We want to lessen the amount of unnecessary big second homes. Maybe we don't want any more commercial development. There's a way to do that through legislation or to try to, to basically regulate somebody out of an ability to utilize their property rights. There's also an ability for us to sort of slap leather on the checkbook and say, if some of these things are important enough to us, maybe instead of putting some of our wants on the Svet tax next time, we'll put a land acquisition Svet tax for a year, $10 million. You could probably buy a couple of lots in the county for that. Maybe you could buy a piece of commercial property and take it out of development potential. But I think that the regulations are a, are a slow burn, and I don't think we'll see a great deal of an effect immediately out of the new LDRs. So, I say, if we're serious about it, let's put our money where our mouth is.
As you look at this dilemma we're in, there's a lot of folks that have grown up here and longtime families. There's some private property rights that they, they have. The state has mandated, you know, they've got that one per 35. So, what kind of incentives do we give these large landowners to put more of their property into conservation? There's got to be some kind of trade-off for them. So, that's what I would say is, let's look at that. How do we take some of that land out of, out of development? And I don't know all the answers, but I know there's, there's going to be some ways as we move forward with the LDRs. And I believe that we can slow down the development, you know, we're, it's, we're a jewel in the world. We're, we're that diamond in the rough. People are always going to want to come here. So, we have to, have to weigh out those factors and see what we can do, but there has to be some way to work with those landowners with their private property rights.
There is a fixed amount of land we have in our, on our little island here, and we are surrounded by public lands. We have roughly 75,000 acres that are private, privately held. Of that, 25,000 has already been in conservation easement, so we're, we're dealing roughly with 50,000 acres left. And so, it's a finite amount. There's, there's a, looking at our comp plan, we're saying that it potentially could double in terms of population over the, with that fixed amount of land based on, on, on property rights. The LDRs are going to be how we're going to see that develop and how we define it, and so that's what we have to get after. One of the concerns and a concerning trend that I'm seeing here lately, I mean, we've seen growth rates of, of 1.5% to 2% a year, but the increase in commuter traffic over the pass and up through the Snake River Canyon of 5% is the thing that's really concerning me. And how we're going to get after that, we need to get after that quickly.
We, we keep talking about the LDRs and the comprehensive plan, but the LDRs are only as good as we make them if they are not understandable, but mostly if they're not enforceable, they're mean nothing. And we certainly saw that recently when we had the short-term rentals. There's a regulation misunderstanding or not understanding, but there was nothing that was enforceable about it. If we keep developing these regulations, which I hear we're saying we need to have these regulations, what good will they be if we don't control or have a way to control what we say? This is what we're going to do, and it's not enforceable. I can tell you that the, I will guarantee you that the short-term rentals will be back on the table probably on the 5th of November. You have to sit and look at us and think, who, who is it that you think is going to stand by? These are our LDRs. These are our rules. If we have to figure out, if this is what we want, how do we have it enforceable? Other communities have done it. We can do it as well. We don't have enough land to mess around with.
Reynolds.
Hello, Michael.
So, there are a couple of studies now, a housing nexus study last year and another housing study that was just released this month that found that of any industry in the valley, the tourism industry creates the greatest need for subsidized housing, primarily because it pays the lowest wages of any industry in the valley. This is their findings. A lot of politicians have already said that we can't grow our way out of the affordable and workforce housing problem. These studies suggest that we can actually make it worse. So, I'm wondering, would you favor restricting future tourism development in order to reduce our affordable and workforce housing problems?
I think the community is in the process of, you know, addressing that situation, specifically with the lodging tax. The other night, listening to the discussion about that, one of the salient points that came through for me was that by using the lodging tax to extend our economy into the shoulder seasons, we're not creating more jobs necessarily. What we're actually doing is creating longer work periods for the jobs that we have. And it may have been anecdotal, but one of the, one of the stories that was told was that a, a woman who's a waitress, and the extra month of income that she generates in month with a more robust fall season currently, spring's a little tough with the weather, of course, has made the difference in terms of her being able to keep her housing and so forth. So, once again, we're, we're in this dynamic tension situation, and I'd like to be part of the discussion to look at whether growth of tourism during the summer months or the winter months or the shoulder seasons does or does not exacerbate the housing situation.
Now, Michael, your question was, do you favor limits on commercial growth? And I absolutely do. There's no way we can continue to grow without limits. The way to do that is with the county's most powerful tool granted to them by the state, which is to plan, to plan, to think ahead and zone. So, if we set, if we do hard work upfront, we set clear, defined limits, understandable limits upfront, we will know where the boundary is for our commercial growth. That's the hard work that I've been talking about. We do have to have that limit. We've basically, you know, one example is the lodging overlay. It's, it's not as bad as it sounds, but it takes some hard work upfront, set those limits, and we certainly can't allow our existing capacity for commercial growth to continue to expand and expand. We have a lot of existing commercial capacity now.
There are millions of square feet of commercial that has not been built in the community. We don't have a lot of control over that unless we buy the property from the people. I don't know if tourism as an industry is necessarily the lowest wage payer. As a, as a tourist industry employer, I, I pay some pretty healthy wages over the past couple of years to, to jobs that used to pay, you know, around minimum wage. So, I do think that stabilizing the tourism economy, to make it a more year-round economy, to make those jobs more permanent, to make the cyclical nature of revenue into those businesses more stable, will help create better jobs in that environment. Should we limit it? Sure, we should. We do it already with just about every part of the commercial code in the LDRs.
I'm going to agree with Scott that I take exception that tourism's the lowest-paid in the county, because my business is somewhat tourism-related. I'm paying upwards $25 an hour for some of my employees. So, those, those same employees get $8, $9 an hour in other places. But we go back to the cyclical nature of our economy. If we were able, like the lodging tax is doing now, is promoting those shoulder seasons in the winter, to give these employees the opportunity to stay here instead of taking a month off in the spring and the fall, going and spending all that money they've made to where they're more year-round, part of our community, able to raise families instead of trying to go somewhere else for certain seasons. So, I believe that with the lodging tax, that we're, we're going to accomplish that.
I would disagree that the lodging industry is the lowest-paid industry. I think that politicians are, and at $37,000 a year, if you look on an hourly wage basis, I think we're, we're probably below the minimum wage. We, we do have a limit now on, in terms of additional resorts. There can't be any more in our county. There can't be any additional resorts. There is the lodging overlay that's under discussion. But this, the issue about housing, and it continues to, to, we continue to talk about it, a three-prong approach is why, the way I look at the housing. One is, is obviously that the, the public sector playing our role. Secondly, unleashing the private sector to particularly bring apartments and new inventory into our community, once we get the LDRs done. But the third one is really the responsibility of the employers, and the employers have to step up, and they need to be able to house the, their employees. We have a great We have a great example going on right now with the Powderhorn project that the Jackson Hole Mountain Resort has developed. There's 92 units that are there, very creative approach, and they're looking at that for Phase Two, and Phase Two will even have more units available. So great example for employers to step up and take responsibilities for housing their employees.
I do think it's wonderful that Jackson Hole Mountain Resort is building those apartments. They've definitely got to have their employees. But what about the small business person? I mean, really, how many people are going to be able to house their own employees without some help? It still comes back to the tourism. We're always going to have tourism. Nothing's going to change with that unless something happens and blows up the Tetons, and then we won't be here anyway. But the year-round thing, again, we go back to, if you're making $20 an hour but you only work half a year, you're still making $10 an hour. And that's what we kind of keep forgetting. And it's not that they're the lowest paid as much as there's the seasonality and the shift work and all the things that come with that. I don't think that we should be limiting business, because again, I think free market is important. But if we're going to not limit it, then we better get a hold of our own land so that we have the workers. We can't have a community where we're not balanced, where we have equal respect for all people.
Michael, I think everybody kind of answered their own question, so I can't really remember what yours is. Would you repeat it?
The question was, do you think journalists should be paid more?
As long as they print the right things, yes.
Basically, the question is, there are a couple of studies now that suggest that the tourism industry is in part one of the major drivers of the affordable housing problem. And I'm wondering if you would support limiting the growth of the tourism industry as a way to deal with the housing problem.
You know, I think it is a housing generator, certainly, but the, most of our employee in affordable housing is actually going to folks that are critical to our community. They are teachers, they are nurses, they are working as volunteers in the fire suppression program that the county has, their law enforcement patrol. If you look at a profile of the folks that are living in deed-restricted housing, they are critical to our overall success, our safety, and our welfare. And I do not see that the tourist industry is actually driving and creating a lot of demand for deed-restricted affordable housing. I do think that as businesses grow in the tourist sector, they're going to have to deal with seasonal workers and seasonal employees. And I disagree with Mr. Vogelheim when he suggests that the private sector can actually build our way out of this. I don't think that really is an option for us. We do not have the economic incentive with very expensive land to invest in very low-rent temporary housing. And so the government has an important role to play going forward. But I don't see it in the restriction on the tourist industry per se. I think it's in the development of real and meaningful employee housing and affordable housing. Thank you.
So, next question goes to Mark Newcomb.
Several questions along this vein have come in from the audience, and I think it's an interesting question, and as small business owners, you can speak to it. What is a livable wage in Teton County?
Well, yeah, I was just thinking about what Commissioner Vogelheim said, and I can tell you that in many of the community's eyes, who are here doing the hard work, $37,000 a year with Bennys was a pretty good wage. I don't know that that's livable. It's a tough question. It's a great question to put out there. It's one that has to be on all of our minds. Why it's hard to answer is because people do come here for the experience. It's a lifestyle. They're willing to give up a lot, and some of that is a wage. They're willing to give up a larger house. Now, how long they're willing to put up with that, it depends. But I can tell you that it's amazing to me that so many people are living here in this community, getting paid what they are getting paid. And I think that it's something that we're going to have to reckon with as we go forward. And again, it's limits on growth that are going to quit putting the pressure on the businesses trying to hire employees that's going to help out in the long run.
I think the answer to the question depends on what your goals in life are. If you want to be a homeowner and raise a family here, the livable wage is going to be something different than if you want to come here for three seasons and ski and have a good time and move on. I think that it's worth recognizing that, just like any other nice community, whether it's the Hamptons or Manhattan, Jackson is not for everybody. Not everyone can come here and buy a house. Not everyone should come here and buy a house. A lot of people come here to rent. The experience is different for everyone that comes here for different reasons. You know, the wage issue is sort of self-solving. People get to a certain point in life, they have bills to pay, they have dreams they want to fulfill, and if they can't make it in Jackson, maybe they have to go somewhere else.
A livable wage is personal choice. It's what you choose to accept. Everybody has to make decisions. How many people come here just to experience Jackson? I can't count how many people came for a season, now they're here for 10, 15 years. It's a personal choice. They chose the wage that would allow them to stay here. And that goes back to when you raise your family or friends, you know, are you willing to bunk with four or five people? That's a personal choice. That adjusts your livable wage. So that's something that, you know, a lot of people, maybe they come to Jackson, they're going to, oh, I'm going to come to Jackson. Maybe they don't even jump in there, research what costs are before they come here. So that's, again, something, maybe they have to move on.
I think our role in this a little bit is to make sure that we have a goal of 65% of our workforce living here. How do we deliver on that? And providing choices for people to move here would be adding to the inventory we don't have right now, and that's on apartments. And so as people are making choices to come here, that's not an option. So as you look at the housing price, how do you go and buy a house in this town for $800,000 and expect to pay that off? I think that this place has never been an easy place to move to, ever. I mean, when I think back on, when I bought property in the early 90s, I couldn't afford to live here, and I had to stay in the corporate world for another 10 years, and then finally earn enough money to finally be able to come here. But it's never been an easy place to move into. What we can do, though, is provide choices. And when you look at the shortage of rentals right now, and we have potential developer north of town that could bring 300 units on the Forest Service land, SR Mills, to give that type of choice to citizens of the community, I think is a good thing.
What we don't know is if those 300 apartments are going to stay affordable. It comes down to, if we don't have it deed-restricted, we can't guarantee it's going to be affordable. I cringe when I hear people say if they can't afford to live here, then they shouldn't be here. Think about what our community would be like if all of us in this room. That was the attitude that we had when we came. I think that, again, it goes back to the free market. It's natural, it's the way things are done. Money talks. If you have the money, you buy. If somebody's going to buy it for more money, you sell it. That's why we have to own it. I think that it goes, again, back to the rentals. We don't have a way for people to rent and save money and then move on to get a house. Think about what our community's going to be like right now. Some people say 42%, some say 47% is second homes. What is our community going to look like when it's 75 and 80%? How much is it going to cost us then? And let me ask, because I know as a former business owner, the turnover kills you. You can't afford to be training people constantly. The turnover is very expensive. And when it comes back to start hurting us, which is what's happening now, the housing issue is starting to hurt one more layer up, which is the business owner, which is why we're now all aware of it.
$37,500. And the reason we know that is because we just raised the dispatch level. So for a woman that is working with a single parent, that is the minimum that seems to be able to attract positions into patrol as our introductory salary for a full-time position. They are struggling to make their housing bill. They're struggling to find housing. And that seems to be a breakpoint upon which we start getting applicants to fill those positions in the community. It's an interesting question, and it is completely relevant to how government has to operate, because for us to have fire, EMS, law enforcement protecting all of our lives in a very real and fundamental way, we need employees to live here, and we need employees that can make a living wage. And so from the government perspective, this is a critical question. I think it's about $37,000.
It's always good to be able to quantify something like that, because it establishes a benchmark. But I think what we're seeing, not only in this community, but in the nation is, and the recession sort of taught about this, living high in the hog was fun for those of us who could do it. But we need to learn to live with less. It's just that simple. And some of the other candidates here have talked about cultural or material expectations, and people make those adjustments. It's a choice. You know, the trends in expectations for housing have been a surprise to me. Lately, both the Housing Authority and the Trust have realized that not only do rental units create revenue that helps offset operational costs, but I've talked to a number of young people who moved into the valley who have no expectation about having homeownership and are okay with it. They're looking long-term about raising families, and rental models work well. And so with a limited amount of land and proactive efforts to increase density versus sprawl, I think we've got a lot of legs to work with to stay ahead of the curve and continue to have a vibrant economy and attract people who want to stay here and work.
Next question is to Scott.
I tried this experiment with the mayor race, and it kind of didn't work, but I'll try it with you guys. My belief is that over the last several months, there's nobody who's given more thought to the differences between the seven of you than the seven of you. And if the goal of this forum is to identify the differences, then what I would like to do is ask each of you to direct one question to one other candidate, not make it a statement, but just ask a question that you think would help clarify the difference between the different candidates.
All righty. It's got to be fun. Can I direct it to more than one candidate?
Nope.
All right.
Because we've got time limitations.
All right. So I'm going to direct this to an incumbent. I'll pick Paul because he's closest. So suddenly this year, the issue of workforce housing has reached epic proportion in political rhetoric, in news coverage, and it's basically dominated every single question in this forum tonight. So as a guy who's been sitting on the sidelines, having been in local government, working on this issue, how would you describe the county commission's effort over the past four to eight years in achieving some measurable, satisfactory outcome on this issue?
Thanks for sharing. Well, there's a couple of things that are kind of going on. We have an economy that's rebounding. Obviously, it's creating a more challenging time for the housing. But from a county standpoint, we've been kind of stuck. And we've been stuck in terms of how we've always been kind of doing it, and how we've been trying to deliver housing. And that has been with the Housing Authority. We're now trying to bring in town so that maybe we can have both town and county, as we have a shared goal of housing 65% of our workforce. Let's have town and county work together on that. How do we also bring the Housing Trust and the Housing Authority working together? Because we're looking at an overhead at the Housing Authority of roughly $600,000. If those two were to merge, somehow that money could be then applied to the solutions. But I think the big thing is the LDRs, and things have just been on hold. And again, I'm an advocate for a three-pronged solution, and the private sector being two parts of that. That would be unleash the building of apartments, and secondly, to encourage employers to house more of their employees. And then again, the government does have a role, but we need to have a more coordinated effort in that role.
So per what Jonathan has unleashed, Paul Perry gets to ask somebody a question.
And thank you for a little bit extra time, because it's a little bit longer.
So I'm going to ask this to Scott, who's sitting right next to me. Since I know you've been on the Chamber of Commerce, the U.S. Chamber of Commerce, and you're out and about, are you going to have time to dedicate to a commissioner spot if you're elected? Are you going to be out taking care of business around the world?
Yes, and yes. I've successfully managed a full-time job over 12 years on the town council. I know it's sometimes difficult to prioritize, but I understand that if you win an election for a seat in local government, you've made a commitment. I would intend to fulfill that commitment completely.
And now Paul Vogelheim gets to ask somebody a question.
Mr. Pomeroy, you started today's discussion by claiming to be the strongest conservationist on this panel. Could you elaborate on that a little bit?
I think I said I had the strongest conservation record. Being a strong conservationist may be in the eye of the beholder. But over my 35 years here, 20 of those years or more were working as an outfitter guide on public lands. I had to work with multiple federal agencies and state agencies to coordinate with not only their expectations for resource stewardship and management, but also working with finite resources and facilities to provide experience for people and in fact teach them how to enjoy the amazing wildlands that we had. During that time, I also was a board member on the Jackson Hole Land Trust, and that was a fantastic experience for me, strategic and hands-on work to preserve the wildlands, open spaces, and agricultural values. And I'm also currently the president of the Snake River Fund and a member of the Rendezvous Park Organization. Both of those, again, have enabled me to leverage my experience and my commitment to wildlands, open spaces for the community. I don't want to brag about it, but I think that's an outstanding record. Thank you for the softball.
Smokey, it's your chance.
Wow, this is a tough one. I wish I could remember, at one of the forums, one of the gentlemen said they had the strongest background in community involvement. I'm pretty sure it was Paul, Paul Perry. So I'm going to ask Paul to explain how he thinks he's had more than me.
Not sure I could ever claim that. But community involvement, I've been involved with youth coaching, football, skiing. That's very important to me. I'm on the board of the Good Samaritan Mission. They're doing a great job. We've kind of reorganized that. We're taking care of a lot of the needs that are really not met in our community. Been a steering committee member of my church, and we take care of a lot of our members through that. So that's very important. I was president of our Rotary Club. Through that, I brought in, I don't know if you remember up snowking, we had a bunch of aerial competition or aerial show one winter, three, four years ago. So that was something that really brought things to our community. So I have been part of a lot of different nonprofits. My company, we help out with nonprofits on a, I guess, weekly basis. It seems like whenever I answer the phone, that's the first word out of their mouth, "We're a nonprofit." And oftentimes I have to answer, "Well, we're in business for profit," so.
My question's for Mark Newcomb. Can you give us some specific solutions for our transportation problems, specifically addressing congestion?
Well, I think in the near term, we are going to have to continue our focus on enhancing our transit with Start. We're going to get our pathways fleshed out. They contribute a little bit. But the one way we can make a difference is to allow Start to maintain the buses it needs to maintain to expand its service. So that's going to take a maintenance facility. That's probably the first thing that we can start looking at before we start thinking about changes in the road. But I do want to think about those changes, potential widening, changes in intersections. I want to make sure we're out in front. I want to make sure we're I want to make sure we're working with YDOT, so that if and when it does happen, we get the things we want as a community.
I'll take it down here for Reynolds to ask his question of somebody.
Thank you, and I've sort of lost track. Has anybody not answered a question yet?
Does it matter? You did your shot.
All right. All right. Well, I'm going to sort of throw this one back at Paul Vogelheim, because Paul has had some attention lately in the press about some statements he's made and perspectives he's had that some have deemed to be partisan. And I'd like to give him a platform, if possible, to describe the context or out of context of that question, if I could.
That's not a softball question. There's been some statements made that the candidates, the Republican candidates, have some sort of agenda, or there's some sort of national agenda that they're being pulled by. And so, it couldn't be further from the truth. You're sitting here looking at three Republican candidates, your friends and your neighbors. And speaking for myself, as I look at, I don't owe anything to any other outside party other than the voters. I have not accepted any money from any PAC or the Tea Party. In fact, four years ago, I gave back $500 to the Republican Party when they tried to give me a contribution. I don't want to be indebted to anyone. I want to serve the people. And so, when you talk about partisanship, I look at someone like Hank Fibbs, who's been my mentor and has been a good friend. And what I always appreciate about Hank was Hank would always keep it civil, and he would always be looking for what's best for the community. And that's where I would also take a stand.
And the last of this special treat is Mark for somebody else.
Yeah, sure. Thank you very much. We've heard a lot about planning tonight, a lot about, I think we've distinguished ourselves in some ways about our commitment to growth and growth management. And I would like to bring up the topic of the underserved. I'd like Smokey to maybe remind us about the underserved and what we can do as a county for them.
I think that our diversity is our greatest strength. We've always been a community that's been recognized, that we have a lot of different types of people that live here. People keep talking about our community character, and that's a pretty hard thing to define. For me, the community character was we always took care of each other. And some people say that's starting to change. I think it's just that we've grown, and so we don't know each other. And that's why when everybody finds out somebody's hurt in our community, we rally. But the sad thing is now, as we're getting bigger, we don't have chances to interact as much as we used to. So, I found that people are surprised when they find out what really does exist in our community, because they just don't know. So, I know, I think the short-term rentals is a real good example, because people didn't think it was affecting just the average person here. They didn't realize people were losing their housing. It was really funny, I had a banker just recently tell me that he thought I was crazy when I first brought it up. He's been trying to rent, him and his wife have been trying to rent, can't find anything that doesn't have an eight-month lease. And there's a reason for that.
We're at a point where we need to transition to the closing statements. So, thanks to the panelists here. So, one minute apiece, Mark first, and then we'll go back, and Scott Anderson will be last.
Okay. Thank you, everyone, for coming out tonight. I really appreciate it. I'm going to wrap up tonight and wrap up my campaign the way it began, focused on two things. One is, how do we best address protecting our health, safety and welfare as a community? The second is, how do we best address the extreme challenges posed by the growth that we're undergoing? It's going to take a lot of hard work to do this. And what do I mean by that? Well, since we are at the library tonight, I thought I'd bring up an example that comes from my experience, which is, imagine if each of you were tasked with coming up with a six-word synopsis of your entire life. Hemingway said, "Baby shoes for sale, never worn." That's an example. It's quality, not quantity, that makes the impact. So, how might we boil it down here tonight for Teton County? We might think about our future generations, and we might say something like, "We took the long view for you." So, thank you. I'm Mark Newcomb. I would appreciate your vote.
I'd also like to thank the league, the panel and the public for the opportunity to present myself as a candidate for county commissioner over these past five months. I think diversity of experience gives diversity of perspective, and my style is to find common ground, be informed and make decisions. The diversity and depth of my entrepreneurial business and employment histories gives me a broad experience and insight into the Jackson Hole economy. My nonprofit board experience and service and the leadership experience within that realm embodies both a hands-on and a strategic planning focus on the protection and stewardship of the wildlife, open spaces and public access that is so important to this community. Again, as I said earlier, with 20 years of guiding and outfitting experience, I'm tied as close to the land as the basis of our tourist and service economies as anybody at the table here. I will bring a new voice and a necessary new perspective to the office of county commissioner. Again, business background, board experience, conservation credentials, new voice, new perspective and new energy, and I'd be grateful for your vote on November 4th.
Thank you, everybody. Again, my name is Ben Ellis. I know many of you in the room, and it's been a pleasure to serve on the county commission for many years. Going forward, we have some really critical community issues that we need to solve, and I have a number of ideas that I proposed in the campaign that are visionary, that can gain support and can actually solve housing and transportation issues in this community. This is about addressing the effects of growth on wildlife and community character, and those two pieces are things that we can address in the next four years. I would truly and humbly appreciate your vote and support in this election. Thank you.
Again, thank you, everybody, for coming. I'm standing on that I'm for the people. I like a balance, and I think that we've lost a little bit of our balance. What makes our community special is that we do care about people, and we care about the environment. And we have to keep that in a balance, and so we can't have one outweigh the other. We can't have a certain financial group of people coming in and taking the majority as well, without keeping the balance of an equal representation by our government. For me, it's important that the owner that owns a business is important to me, but so is the dishwasher. And I think it's important that we look at them, that they're all respected, that their voices are all heard. I don't know why, all of a sudden, our C-words have become a four-letter word. So, compromise, collaboration, cooperation, those are things that are important, but they're only important if every voice is at the table.
On Monday night, there's an event for Smokey at St. John's Church. It's at 5 o'clock, 5:30. Smokey, thanks for all your hard work. I'll add my thank you for all of you taking the time to come out tonight, and the League of Women Voters for organizing this, particularly Karen. Thank you for your emails to keep us all on track. I've worked hard the last six years, and I want to continue to work hard. I've been accessible, I've been engaged, and I've been able to be effective in your local county government. It's not about labels, it's about getting the job done, what's best for the community and delivering on that. So, I'd ask for your vote on November 4th, Paul Vogelheim.
I too want to thank everybody for coming tonight, especially the other commissioner candidates up here. We live in a truly spectacular part of the world, full of natural beauty, abundant wildlife, as well as great friends and neighbors. We've heard one voice, one valley for a number of years, and I truly believe that. We need to keep that in mind as we plan for the future of town and county, and be respectful of each of our decision-making, through the decision-making process. As sales tax revenue increases, it's imperative to ensure fiscal accountability and even more responsibility for a stronger community and a cost-effective government. I bring practical, successful business experience to county government. I understand the challenges and opportunities you face. I'm out there with those folks all the time. I understand what you are going through, what those folks are going through. I'm personally involved out in our community. Commissioner Perry, strong, sensible, accountable leadership. Thank you for your support and vote.
I did not write a soaring end-of-campaign speech. I would like to just touch on a couple of things that I found interesting in tonight's forum. I like the argument about partisanship. It's kind of silly. We have, on one hand, someone saying, "Well, these guys are partisan, so vote for us, the other guys. We're not partisan." I'm not partisan, I'm independent. And the reason that I am is because it is silly. It's a waste of time. It's a silly discussion, and it doesn't do anything to move us forward, to solve our problems. Solving our problems will require action. I'm a guy who believes in action. I'm tired of talking over the same arguments. I'm tired of kicking the can down the road on big decisions. If I'm elected, expect me to take action. Scott Anderson, independent, nonpartisan, nice guy, kind and decisive.
All right. Thank you, candidates, very much. Thank you, panelists, for the questions that stimulated the great conversation.